All right, it is currently seven o'clock and we do have a full board with an alternate. So I am going to open this meeting. It's the Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 zoning board of adjustment meeting. And before we start, I'd like to have everyone stand and face the flag. Everybody remove hats. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I will have everyone introduce themselves. We'll start to my right.
Bob DeRozier, I'm an alternate.
Terry Barnes, sir.
Teresa Bascom.
Bonnie Valona McKinnon.
Kathy Mayo.
And Mr. DeRozier is going to be seated and voting for Romeo Denae tonight. The first case, we have a very busy evening, by the way, and we will be calling it at 10 o'clock tonight. So I'm hoping that we get to everybody's cases. Just wanted to give you a fair warning.
Comment?
Pardon?
There's a comment?
No, calling it, I will be adjourning the meeting.
I got up outrageously.
Yes.
I counted votes today.
Oh, fun. So the first case, already before I say assume, is case 24-008 VA Atwood. This is for 326 Stage Road. It is a continued case. The application is from New Hampshire Land Consultants on behalf of Donna Atwood requesting two variances from the Nottingham zoning ordinance. The first variance is from Article 2, Section C dot 2 dot C to permit a back lot to be accessed via an easement over an existing common driveway that is not on the subject property. The second variance is from Article 2, Section C 2 dot B to permit a parcel that has less than their required 200 feet of frontage and allow for a back lot with a required frontage of 20 feet. The property is located at 326 Stage Road and is identified as tax map 31, Lot 10-3. Hello, hello.
Scott from New Hampshire Land Consultants.
Heath Atwood, representing Donna Atwood. Interested party.
So I'll bring everybody up to speed. We came in in June after the first meeting and there was discussion about the highway access permit, if there was one. So we submitted that to DOT. So June and August, it took, it took till today to get that permit.
Wow.
We got the permit today. And I submit, I emailed it over to Alana, but I don't know if she was in today or not. I do have large sets of plans if anybody wants them that are, we're looking at with the color coding and everything. And I do have copies of the permit as well as, they requested a drive, a draft driveway easement document for the permit to be issued, so we got that as well and that's been submitted to the town. After the last meeting too, we also met with Dale via email and I met with him once. And he actually came up with five variances, but they kind of overlap each other. And I guess we need to discuss that if there's five or two needed. The ones that Dale came up with is Article, the first two that you mentioned, Article 2, Section C point, C 2B, and Article 2, Section C 2 3. In addition to that, he came up with a couple of other ones, but it's about shared driveway along common boundary line. And then two that reference to the back lot subdivision where one lot will have the frontage of 200 feet, which are the variants we're already asking for. And then the second one was about having access to the back lot over its own 20-foot access, where you know this one's a common driveway with a common easement and access, access easement and maintenance easement on that. So that's another variance that he, he thought we might need. He said in his letter that he wasn't sure if they are all needed, but that's what he listed. That's what we put on the plans and we actually resubmitted all those variances to the town.
Okay.
After July.
In July?
Yeah.
Did we get those? And I can find them?
I did.
All right.
Transmittled and everything that we did, submitted it to Alana.
Did you get, did you get them? And I'm just not seeing them. Anybody else on the board get a list of five? So you received those from Dale in July?
Dale wrote a letter and I think you probably have that letter.
Right, we have the letter.
Where he suggested five variances. And in response to that, on July 10th, we submitted to the town the five variances.
Okay.
And, and they're the exact variances that Dale felt may be needed. And I'll just back up a little bit. I know there was a little bit of confusion at the last meeting, so I'll just kind of go from the top. But those are the five variances we're asking for. And I'll just go from the top, from existing conditions to where we are right now.
Okay, that's the 12.
The existing law is 72.61 acres, has 207.76 feet of frontage with an existing house and outbuildings deep into the lot. And on the plans we submitted that are color coded, you can see where the house is down past where the throat of the lot is and it opens up, the house is in the back. What we're proposing is to subdivide that house off with 18.48 acres and 187 feet of frontage where the 200 is required. So that's the variance we're asking for, for that. And then having a back lot. So the, the new lot that would be created for the house is the purple line that comes down along this property line to my right and over back to the, I guess it's the western lot line. So the 20-foot strip of land that would go with the back lot is along this, this right side property line, goes the entire way and then all the back land would go with the back lot. That has 20 feet of frontage and it has 54.13 acres of, of land with it. One of the stipulations on approving a back lot, back lot in the town of Nottingham is it can't be further subdivided. So by doing this, if it was approved, that lot can no longer be subdivided any further. And one of the other things, it either has to have the driveway along the common lot line, which doesn't really work in this situation. There's a really nice existing driveway in place and there would be additional wetlands and packs and a bunch of issues that would create if you follow the property line. So what we put in place and DOT accepted was an access easement and maintenance easement for the driveway that's in place, so that's a common driveway. So the driveway would service both lots until you get to the back. And then, of course, it'd be an easement going out to the back lot and then it would, would service the back lot where the driver would have to go for the back lot. So like I said, we got our driveway permit today. I do have copies of that if you don't. I do have copies of the variance that we submitted back in July, the variances, five of them. And I do have copies of the easement and restrictions, access easement that we submitted to DOT and they approved.
Okay. We do have the five variance requests or the denial.
Yeah.
From Dale, but I don't see that I have any reply of you or.
Yeah, we submitted on the 10th of July. I mean, I had to transmittal that we, we wrote and I delivered it.
Okay. I'm not denying that you did.
No.
I'm just saying it, and it may be that because the case was continued and continued that, that it just didn't, didn't follow through to us. All right, does anybody have any questions? Kathy? Bonnie? So do you have something that, because you rattled it off pretty quickly. With regards to the variance requests?
Yeah, I can submit this.
Could I have it, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If you want me to read in the record, go ahead and leave it one copy.
So this is Dale's.
Yeah, that was the denial and then there's five variances that follow it in that package. And like I said, some of them overlap with each other and they're just in different sections of the ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
So we thought, we draw out everything that we saw that might be a hurdle and that's what we applied for.
So is your, are your responses basically the same thing for each and every single one of them?
Some of them are going to re-repeat because there's some of them that are the exact same, like for the two back lots, sub lots, there's a frontage variance. There's one of the frontage variance and then you go back to the first one, which is frontage variance. So those are going to be similar. I probably added a little bit of language in for some of the other stuff, the easement and that stuff.
Check to see.
But they're going to be, they're, they will be similar.
Okay, because I was flipping through and it's like, it just looks like it's saying the same thing over and over again. Well, they're looking that over and, well, if anyone has any questions at the moment, why don't I?
I get one.
Okay.
Now, the driveway that goes in, it goes across the wetlands.
Right.
Who, who put that in?
I believe, to the best of my knowledge, it's Farnum Friday when he logged the back land in the early 1980s.
Okay.
Because we looked at, we looked at Google Earth, you know, if you're familiar with Google Earth.
You can go back, yeah.
And it's been there a long time. It was in the early 80s, I think, when it was put there or mid 80s. The subdivision up front that created all those lots in the front was in the early, mid 80s.
Okay.
And I think it was that time period or might have been before they chopped up the frontage lots and sold off the frontage lots, timing when it did the logging. But if you go back on Google Earth, it goes back into the 80s since it's been, was in place.
No, no. All right, it is 7:13. I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak for?
Yes.
Watch out for the cords, please. You're on shaky ground there.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, who did you say you were?
A bachelor.
Heath Bachelor, okay.
316 City Drive. And one of the things I have, a couple of questions, like I know the zoning board, I'm not sure about the laws or whatever that, but the town voted that in for 200 feet of frontage, plus or minus, correct? When somebody did the subdivision.
Correct.
That's why they did the subdivision, 200. And the reason for that, for the people of the town voted that in, so it wouldn't be further developed, subdivision, right? Correct?
Well, it was to allow for the road frontage, your, your.
200, yeah. So it would be 1,246 feet, six house lots, 1,242 feet of road frontage. So that's be 207 feet per six lots. And that's, that's the reason why the town voted that in, so there wouldn't be any further development. Correct?
I, I don't know that to be true, I'm sorry.
But who knows that, I mean, they just voted in a road frontage of 200 feet, but I mean, they allow for a back lot subdivision too, so.
Yeah, so anybody that has over five acres, 200 feet of road frontage, has over five acres and you can put a house lot in back? Is that what you?
Well, they need 20 feet, I think, for that back lot. Isn't that right, Terry?
Yeah, if you have two.
Yeah, they need 20.
Personally, I have, I have 1,100 feet of road frontage.
I want to make five house lots. And I get it approved by the planning board. I have 220 feet for each house lot I put in. It's approved by the planning board, not the zoning board, right?
Correct.
And I can sell those lots, lots. But then somebody can apply for a variance, put a house in back of those.
Right, as long as they have the acreage. Right, if you have five acres, you probably could get it.
Doesn't make any sense as far as like.
No tracking.
You know, I don't know, making any sense to you.
Well, that's just, that's the way the law is written, so.
I, I guess, I'm not tracking number one and number two. I'd like to know, you said you wanted to speak for this case, for the approval of this?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And I noticed they showed the plan on there. Mind if I set these on this?
Sure, go ahead.
They show the plan.
Hello, come on in.
There's no showing of what's there. Okay? This is an airboat, yeah. Position, Mr. 1981.
Please note that Romeo Denae has arrived. It is 7:16.
And I have coffee if you'd like to look at it. Bullseye, too. Do you want to, those? The Atwood case.
And he is now seated. And I've unseated you, okay?
You can walk in and follow me outside.
No, you can stay as you like.
Sheriff, if you'd like to explain, I don't.
Please, please be careful.
Thank you.
Which one? Atwood.
You have two sets, I think. You want to, no, share that way. Okay.
So a point, this is a, this is a, the wetlands behind my house, it was right here. And there's, there's no road. This is 1981 from the Brentwood extension, all of those. And you've got two auto works, you've got the Merit Pond, which is, I don't know, that's going to be 20 foot, I guess. You've got Kennison Pond, it's, you know, it's got to be 20 foot, let's say. There's a lot of repurposed contours on that. And then there's another Beaver Pond, that's a few acres. And the river that goes through here, and I know Mulligan has a, a bridge there, but it was designed by NRCS. And that was, that was NRCS that had engineered and designed that. It doesn't affect anything. Then you get down here, there's no road. I mean, and all these are tributaries that go into Little Mulligan. All these, here, this is a power pond that isn't going to us.
This is a sink.
So there's all that water that goes through there.
All this water goes through.
All comes out of.
DeMar to Kennison to this Beaver Pond and it flows down through here and flows down through here.
That goes to the North River and.
And ends up going down the power pond, no?
Okay.
Trying to follow me some more?
So these are from, these are from actual aerial photos?
Yes.
Not, not.
Extension.
Google Earth, right.
No, no, I went right down to Brentwood.
Right, and you've got the, you've got the actual. Yeah, that you can get, yeah, okay.
Because I couldn't get them in NRCS, they didn't have a date.
Okay.
This is, this is 1981. I mean, that's quite a bit of watershed right there. You start taking, if you get flash flooding or something like that, you know, if you get five inches of rain, it's going to. All right. Let's get that one in. Sure. This is 1985. Carnation entered the road, yes. Like there are good highways here.
Yeah.
It's 1985. So I mean, when that logging road was put in, the culverts were put in, there was two culverts put in, but they were, you know, the water level, it didn't, didn't dam the It was put in the logging road. So that's 1985.
That's that road that's across there now on the 85 map, that's from the logging?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So Jimmy.
This road washed out so many times.
Jimmy put that in.
I guess so.
Okay.
Those two culverts, it's washed out so many times. And then the other guy, who sold, not who sold, who died, Colin Wayne, the auto logging guy, he owned, and he had, and bought for like a place pond or whatever like that. And he kept replacing the road, replacing the road, replacing the road, and kept building up the road. As you can see in the, on the page one and page two, you can see this area of photographs, it's from NRCS. You can see the dip variation in the water in here. And you've got, you've got a Lake, Lakeview, you've got a lake here, and then it's depleted by property here. So you basically have earth and dam that was never engineered by anyone. You know, what is engineering, what is the permit to go across the water? I mean, it's because it's there. I mean, it's a, I mean, like I said, you know, I, like, so what's preventing me from doing a Friday night special and putting the road across like that and leaving the road and, you know, putting a house under the water, which I wouldn't do, but I mean, it's basically what they, because I had, I had lost a lot of lumber on this, on this, on this upper peninsula. We used to always call it the point. And actually, I film Ogier, Auger, I don't know what, you can pronounce it two different ways, but, you know, I lost over 15,000 feet of lumber on there because that wing guy kept building the road up and the road keeps washing out. There's no design to that water crossing. You need an engineer to design a crossing for the water. I mean, like it, it's kind of like the saying that it's better ask for forgiveness than permission. Know what I mean? It's like, yeah, the road's there, but why is it there? And then you better, and is there a building permit for the house? They produced a bu, building, did they give a building permit for the house?
I don't know. I assume they did.
Well, I know, but I mean, they did get a building, they didn't get a road crossing, a permit for that, so.
Right, but what they claim is that when they went to the planning board, the planning board said you can go down the existing road that's there and use that as your driveway.
Right, so who are the building inspector was in, I don't know, was it 2001? Does he own the lunch or what?
We, we can't obviously go and second guess on any of that.
Oh, I know, but I mean, it's a legal, it's a legal water crossing. And in terms of Terry, I can't, I invented the first time and second time, this is the fourth time, you walked down to that driveway. Did you correct?
Yeah, well, we drove down, yeah.
Did you notice a difference in water levels?
Well, with some, it wasn't, it wasn't a lot, I mean, they got a lot of fairly big culverts in there, so I mean, it didn't wash out, it didn't wash out in the 06 and 07 floods, right? It held up.
I don't know.
Or is that when you ended up with all that water backed up in your property?
I don't know, one time I went down, they had a piece of plywood, drywall, yeah, they had a piece of plywood in front of the road.
Yeah, because I mean, in 06 and 07, those were the.
Yeah, 05, month of day.
Two biggest flood, yeah, that would work. I mean, if you didn't flood it, those, you weren't going to flood, so.
Oh, it's the Mother's Day flood you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's, there's no variance. They should, they should have the static level of that pond. They shouldn't have an earth and dam on that pond, which, which is what they have, an earth and dam. You know, a static, they need a static level.
Yeah.
Because I actually own, this property here, they had a body of foot in the 1800s, there's like a rock crossing there. I don't know if they tried to go crane areas or whatever, but, but this, you shouldn't be able to, you know, flood my piece of property up here with this. You know, with no, with no engineer, engineer to it, basically what I'm talking about. You go fill, fill a swamp hole and pick up the culverts and you don't get a permit.
Yeah, I don't know any of the history of it, so I don't. Somebody had told me that they didn't, the road wasn't even put in for the logging, that they went in a different direction, but obviously they, they, Jimmy put that road in and went across it. Then you say it flooded, it washed out and then it got replaced.
And the one guy, the Wayne, I don't know, he owned it for like 10 years, he kept raising the culverts up, raising the culverts up. And then he flooded all my way up here, which I have pine land up there, which called the point, yeah, it's never going to come back.
All right. Thank you. I thought you were going to speak for this case, but it sounds very much to me like you're speaking against.
Well, I own both ends of the pond.
Okay.
I'm not a voter, I'm against it, yes.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
May I answer?
Comments?
I try.
Anybody? No, okay. Thank you, Heath. Would anybody else like to speak for or against this case before us tonight? You're the applicant. Nobody else would like to speak for or against? Okay, it is 7:27. I will close the public hearing. All right, any responses to what Mr. Bachelor said?
Yeah, the, the bridge has never been built up. All we've replaced was the sand every time it went over the bridge to wash out and started showing the culverts, so we recovered them. Yes, some of the culverts collapsed over years because they were metal and rusted out, so we put in some new ones, but we didn't change anything. And if anything, we lowered it, not up it, because we don't want all that water going over the bridge, because it was costing us a lot of money to keep fixing it. There was a, a washout at one time, was it 2006, that bad storm? All right, FEMA came down, looked at it, DOT came down, looked at it, the police department came down, looked at it, they said, yes, we'll fix it for you. And it got fixed. We put in, that's when we put in the black culverts instead, we took out the metal rusty ones. And then we still had problems because of the beavers stuffing them full all the time and I hate talking about my past husband, where he's just passed away. It's been really tough on me.
Sorry, I'm very sorry.
I'd like to just point out a couple of things too. Just still, theoretically, if it was approved tonight, these variances, we still have to go through the planning board and do the subdivision. So this isn't our last stop. And they're going to no doubt look at the driveway, make sure it's adequate for two lots and all that stuff. So the driveway will be looked at more, more in depth than what, what we are here for anyways.
Well, the only difference we did is we put in beaver prevention so they wouldn't stuff them so it would get overflow, so it would flow normally. And that's why we put in two of the beaver preventions. Because I didn't want to shoot the beavers, you know? I called up the wildlife, they said, oh, shoot them. I said, I'm not going to shoot them. So, you know, we put in the beaver prevention thing so the water would still fall and go out. And we've had a very dry season this year, so I've never seen the pond so low because there's just no water. It's so dry. I, that's the lowest I've ever seen it since in the 20 something years I've been there. And, you know, winters, it comes up and you can't control Mother Nature. You know, we do the best we can.
Some people are trying.
And there was a, the gentleman talked about a building permit, there was a building permit issue in 2001 when you built, correct? That was when you built, 2001?
We, we bought the property in 2001 and then we started building more or less, it was the winter of 2001, we walked down there, we stood on the bridge, we looked at everything. He wanted the property more than I wanted the property, but. He wanted the property more than I wanted the property, but you know. It's his hometown, he wanted to come back, so I said, okay. And then I took pictures of it over the years as we started building. It took a couple of years just to build a log home, because we did it ourselves, we did not buy a kit. So we went through two winters just trying to build it. So that was two thousand and two and two thousand and three.
Okay.
Then we moved into it. We lived above the garage for a while while we were still working on the main house. It was a big project.
I'm sure it was. Okay, board.
Oh, I, I just, you said, uh, it washed out, like probably two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, then you had FEMA.
FEMA came in.
And what did they do? Did they?
They gave us the money to fix it and everything, Joe told them what he was going to do. We had a back home, we had the tractor. And FEMA says, that's great, we'll give you the money and we'll get you the culverts, and that's what they did, we put them in.
So they didn't, they didn't fix it? They gave you the money to fix it?
Right. But it was put back the way it was, but the culverts were put a little bit lower, so they'd keep the water down, so it wouldn't go over the road. Cause every time you had a big thaw out or something, it was a problem with the, with the, uh, beavers.
What was the diameter of the culverts? What was the diameter of the culverts?
Where are those? Three feet?
It gotta be three or four, yeah, they were pretty good sized.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty good sized culvert.
All right, thank you.
The same as the one that were in there before, same size.
Well, I don't know what was in there before.
Yeah, well, it was the metal ones.
All right, and I want to remind everybody, we are here to look at the denials that Dale stated for this application. Each lot shall have a contiguous frontage of two hundred. This will have a hundred and eighty-six when the twenty is applied for the driveway. So it's not meeting on that, so that is one of the things we will need to consider. Each single parcel is required to have a driveway cut with minimum frontage. This, um.
Within, within the minimum frontage is what that variance is.
A driveway cut within the minimum frontage, correct. Uh, denial three was shared driveways will be kept to a common boundary. The proposed existing driveway is not a shared driveway, but did you say the DOT says it is now?
No, it is a shared driveway, and that's what DOT approved. What this variance is for is the driveway is not on the common boundary line, it will be on, completely on the eighteen acre lot. Where there's an easement in pla- will be an easement in place for access and maintenance of the driveway. So that variance for Article Two, Section C, Point Two, Point C, Point One, is it's not on a common dra- on a common boundary line, so we have to have a variance for that.
Not, not on a shared.
On a common boundary, yeah.
Not on, it, this says not on a shared driveway, but it's not on a common.
Boundary line.
Boundary. All right, denial four was one lot created must contain a minimum of two hundred feet of frontage and a minimum of two acres, well, we don't have a problem with the acreage, it's the frontage. Again, which goes back to the earlier one, it's one eighty-six. And denial five is backlot subdivisions. The other lot created must contain a minimum of twenty feet of frontage, including curb cut for approved access and a minimum of two acres. The access road to this lot must be at least twelve feet wide and must be owned in fee simple by the owner of the lot to be accessed. This lot may not be further subdivided, both lots must comply with all other Z O requirements, okay? So this is what we're looking at, this is what our concern is. It's really not about the culverts. It's really not about the, the beavers. We've got to look at, are we going to approve their request to have a backlot subdivision using the driveway that was just currently approved by DOT? So. Have you any more questions for these folks? If not, we need a motion.
So the driveway was approved as a shared driveway by the state?
Yeah, and. And did you say you do or don't have copies of that permit?
We do not.
No.
It's in, I think.
Watch me. Thank you. Thank you.
Is this responsible for maintaining the driveway again?
I'd like to look first.
The whole entire driveway?
So that was another thing DOT requested, was a, a draft. So one, if this subdivision is ultimately approved through here, through the planning board, this easement will also be recorded at the same time as the my line. And this spells out who's responsible for it and how you do it and arbitration and a bunch of stuff.
The hard part right now is that deliverables are supposed to come a week prior for us to be able to review them, and you're just giving them to us tonight.
Yeah, but.
I know that they just arrived tonight, but it's.
They were submitted on July tenth, two months ago. Except for the driveway permit.
Exactly, that, that's what I'm talking about, so it's like. It makes it difficult for us to review all this and respond to anything tonight.
And I think it's page two on, I don't have a copy of the driveway permit, but page two talks about the second lot.
And I'm not talking about the, uh, denials from Dale, because we did get those, I'm referring to the driveway stuff.
Yeah, which unfortunately was issued today.
Mm-hmm. Are you looking at yours?
On page two, number one is where it speaks to the two lots on the permit.
My question to you members is, do you have anything further you feel you need from them? If not, then we need to render a decision this evening. If there is something further you need, then we need to look at a continuance.
I would personally like a continuance, only because, you know, this driveway permit just came in. We, we, I know we saw the denial letter, but we never actually saw the variances.
Okay.
And we probably would have, but it kept getting continued and continued, and I don't know why we didn't see them.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to continue.
To continue.
Till the next meeting.
What, uh, what do you hope to discover by the next meeting? Just further review of the DOT?
Yeah, I just want to look at this stuff and, and look at the, uh, the variances, look at the ordinances a little more with actual numbers and.
Do we want anything further from the applicant?
Nope.
Okay. I'll second the motion.
Second is Romeo. All right, there is a motion to continue the case to October fifteenth at seven P M. So that the board members have the opportunity to look over the new information that came this evening. And I would like to get a copy of this DOT, so, um.
That's what I handed it.
You handed, you, you didn't have enough for all of five, all five of us.
I did send it to Alana, but I'll provide.
Is this online up at the DOT?
What's that?
Is it online?
Well, they allow, we're permitting online now, um, but I don't know if there's a public access to.
Okay, I just wanted, yeah, we could just.
I'll reach out to Alana to get a.
Okay.
Copy sent to me, a paper copy, because I'd like to look it over. But anyway, so there's a motion on the floor to continue to October fifteenth. So the board members can look over the paperwork we received this evening and the new information on the five variances. It was seconded by Romeo, any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five zero zero.
You said fifteenth is the date?
It is October fifteenth. So if there's anything, zoning, yep, October fifteenth. Anything new you feel we need to have? We need to have it. Correct.
Yeah, and I'll check with Alana, just make sure she has everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all we, so we can't have six?
No, we're five member boards.
Well, that's okay, I'll sit here.
You're going to head out? Okay.
I didn't, I didn't want to ruin your night off, I could have left.
He was happy to see you, Rome.
Thank you, stay and discuss.
He's got a lot going on at home, so he doesn't have to be here, he's not going to be. All right. Our next application is case number two four dash zero one two V A Kells, which is fifty-three Smoke Street. The application from Robert Kells requesting a variance from Article Two, Section C, seven B, five of the Nottingham zoning ordinance in order to permit the conversion of current living space into an A D U totaling nine hundred and eighty-four square feet. The Z O states that the A D U shall not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet. The property is located at fifty-three Smoke Street in Nottingham and is identified as tax map twenty-three, lot ten dash three. Please introduce yourselves and verify criteria.
I'm Robyn Kells, fifty-three Smoke Street.
I'm Bob Kells, fifty-three Smoke Street.
Okay, we have your application before us, but if you'd like to go over your information with us, that would be great.
I'll just read the answers.
Sure, that'd be fine, thank you.
Uh, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because. This, the living area was permitted in two thousand and five and approved. At the, whoever the current building inspector was at the time. If the variance was granted in the spirit of the ordinance, uh, we'd like to observe because, well, at some point, I'd like to add a kitchenette to this area. Just because it would make things, make life a lot easier than it currently is, but. And granting the variance would be, would do substantial justice because uh, I think it would probably add some value. If, if at some point we decide to sell. Like I said, it has been occupied since it's constructed, since we constructed it by the family, so. Hopefully that answers that, but. If the variance is granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because I don't believe it has any effect on the surrounding properties. Like I said, the space has been in existence since two thousand and five. Externally, it would not change. The only small change internally would be the, uh, it would add value and, uh, very private and cannot be seen by the neighborhood, so. I guess. Unnecessary hardship. No fair and, uh, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general pub- general public purposes of this ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because. Well, here again, uh, I believe that this space was permitted for this use in two thousand and five. And the approvals we had, the A D U would have a beneficial impact in its future. And would, would, would allow for a single level of living for us in the, in the effect of something happens in the future.
Would you be willing to just ex, I don't, did Mr. Bonzer and I went and did the site walk and we spoke with them, did everybody here get a chance to see it and meet with them? No, no. Would you, rather than reading the rest of this, maybe just explain what is going on with your particular case? I think that might be a little easier to convey your.
What's going on? Well, uh, we got into this whole thing because I went and asked the building inspector for an A D U. And then that led to a discussion as to how many square feet or the size of the addition. And there's some discrepancy as to how we got to nine hundred and eighty-four square feet. He wants to call the attic space a clo- a bedroom. And I have included some pictures of the space. In the appraisal, it's, it shows that it's a pretty big space, but in all actuality, it's only eighteen by eight feet. And I closed it in with drywall to keep the critters out of the attic space, if you will. It's, uh, still has basically a subfloor, uh, there's a vent pipe on the old red. I put a window in just to add some light, so I wouldn't have to rummage around in the dark and find things in the attic. It's just, it's been a storage space since it was built. Never been any intention to make it a bedroom. But because it has a closet bump out in a hole in it, which we hang garments on. The building inspector said, well, that's basically a bedroom. I said, well, maybe by standards, it's a bedroom, it's never going to be a bedroom. It's not something that we're looking to do. Does that help?
How many, how many bedrooms are in the existing addition now?
There are three bedrooms.
In the existing?
No, just one.
There's one in the existing addition.
Okay, in the addition, the one you want to have the A D U is only one.
Right.
And so you have, uh, what'd you say, nine hundred?
Yeah, it says, well, if we add in the attic space.
Right.
And it's not living space.
Right, guy, I have an eighty, eight, but if you take that off, you're at eight forty, so you're like ninety, ninety feet over the seven fifty.
Right.
And you have, uh, uh, an entrance from there right into the, your living.
There is an entrance there.
Which is part of the, part of the, uh. A D U rule.
Right.
And so back in, yeah, oh five, there was no A D U.
Exactly.
Yep.
Now, how, how much land do you have, you have like three and a half?
Three and a half acres.
Three and a half acres.
So really, the only thing we change is we're taking existing space that is like an office space and making a small kitchenette. That's about it.
And you said you initially built this as a two car garage?
It was a two car garage and, and it was, uh, initially the per- the original permit stated it was a two car garage with living space above. And the building inspector at the time said, basically, you can do whatever you want, but you can't put a kitchen sink in. And I said, sounds reasonable enough at the time. I was trying to help out my son. I was trying to help out my son. And we built this space for my wife and I to live while my son lived in the bigger house with his new family and children. And so, just so happens that that didn't pan out the way everybody thought it was gonna. And a few years later, we switched back. My wife and I moved to the big house and he moved into the separate bedroom. And it's where we are today.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
So the, can I just ask about the closet in the upstairs room? It's just a hanging thing?
I believe I have a picture of here, or maybe you have a picture of your package?
I don't know. We don't have a picture of it.
Yeah, it's just a pole in an attic space.
It might be in the tax... No, they don't have inside pictures, do they?
No. I have a...
Do you have the picture?
No. We have your tax map picture and then your drawing that was done, but we don't have a picture. And please, please be careful of the cords.
See if I can make it.
It has a bathroom in it currently?
Yes.
Does it have a bathroom? Full bath?
Yes. Well, it doesn't have a tub, it has a stand-up shower. But this is the space that's being considered as a bedroom because it has this closet pole here.
It's 18 by 8 and that's one of the walls?
18 by 8, and that's the back wall, that's faces north. It's not heated.
Well, heat does rise, you know.
Yeah, I don't think so.
There's a big pipe that runs across the floor, too.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's, this white pipe here is actually a vent for the bathroom sink that's down below the room. And it's a subfloor, so.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like it's 8 by 18, but a lot of it is, it can stand up and a lot of it...
No, it cannot.
Doesn't look like the most livable space.
No, no.
It looks more like an attic.
It's storage.
Yes, so you can't have a closet in your attic, okay?
Yeah, it gives the closet, it's storage.
Yeah, so that's the end. When we went down that road, I was like, you know, he said, well, you have 984 square feet, that's it. Well, if I want to add in the, the size of the attic in the appraisal, I have more than that, but it's an unusable space, you just, you can't get to it.
So even if you...
I think the mice enjoy it.
If you take that space away, you still have...
840 square feet.
And that's within the, yes?
The 750 is our...
It's 90 feet over.
It's 90 feet over.
Yeah.
I know the state is talking about increasing the size.
Yes, they are.
So it's kind of a difficult space here.
Is there a difference between a kitchen and a kitchenette?
Yes.
Because the application has kitchen, but they're talking kitchenette, I don't know if that...
Well, I don't think this, the space is pretty small.
And it's not like we can put Big Island in it or anything, I mean, if we can put a sink and a refrigerator in there, that would be a big plus.
And some cabinets.
Our focus needs to be on approving the ADU request because it is over the 750 limit. That's the only thing we need to be... Is, no, the, the application request is for the permit to convert current living space into an ADU. And then Dale mentions that the, the septic design, but that is something you'd be taking care of anyway.
Right.
Ours is specifically for the size, so.
Okay.
What's your vote? Or your questions?
We have it.
I'm just asking if you have any questions?
No.
Anything, Romeo?
I'm just wondering how somebody could get around in this place without, other than Dr. Soref.
Without decapitating themselves?
Look, he's always hunched over quite a bit. I don't know, anybody else could get around in this, so I don't know how you could call it a bedroom.
I don't either.
Just because it's got a weird place where you hang clothes.
A somewhat walk-in closet.
If it had just had a freestanding pole on some boards or something, but not an indentation, would that have been a closet also or just closed rack? And then it wouldn't be a bedroom.
Yeah, I don't know.
And a pipe going across the floor so you could trip on it all the time?
If we, if we approved it, we could exclude that as living space, so.
All right, if there's nothing further, it's 1956 or 756. I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak for or against this application? Y'all are here for your own cases, right?
I have questions about it, I'm not speaking for or against it, I'm just trying to visualize it.
Okay, so I'll have you...
I'm in which, if you want me to follow, for this hearing. So you have a house?
Wait, you can't speak to us from there. I need for you folks to have a seat so the woman can come up. Ma'am, you need to come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Joanne.
No, you need to...
Sit down.
Because it's, because the, this is recorded?
Yes.
So that the minutes can be typed? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Joanne Albert, and I live at 14 Little River Road. And I agree that you cannot see their houses or any of their buildings because I'm behind you and I can't see anything because, but, so you have a house and then you built a garage and you turned it into an office, right? So that was all of it. Oh, so it's an addition, it's not a separate building? That's what I'm trying to understand.
No, it's all that.
All right, so the house, and then you built a detachment, and it was garage, and then it was an office. And now you want to, because that's one floor and your house is multi-level, you want to make that...
The house is two floors, that's right.
So you're gonna have that as a space, but it'll still stay attached to the, the other house? I mean, you're not doing any, um, okay.
It's just bigger than they allow.
All right.
Yeah, not that much, but...
By a little bit. All right, that clarifies it for me, because I, when I, I don't know about ADUs, but I assumed it was a separate building, not an addition.
No, it's got a hall, it's got a building between the garage and this, like a hallway, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Albert. Mr. Kells, you may come forward again. Okay, I've closed the public hearing. It is 1959. Bring the case back to the board. Anybody with any further questions? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application from Robert Kells requesting a variance for the conversion of current living space into an ADU totaling 984 square Case number 24-012.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the application request for a variance on case 24-012 VA Kells to permit the conversion of current living space into an ADU totaling 984 square feet, which we don't really think it's that, but the zoning ordinance states an ADU shall not exceed 750. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And no opposed, because it's the 5-0-0. All right. Your case has been approved, but please note that there is a, what, a 30-day?
30-day window in which anyone may appeal. So if you do any work in that 30-day window and they appeal and succeed, you're out of your money.
You've pretty much got everything.
I was just gonna say, you're really, you're really not doing much of a change, but just so you know, there is that 30-day window. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay, okay.
Do you want to keep these pictures for the file?
Yeah, it's got set here. Thank you. Sure, what I want is a copy of that DOT. That was this case here. Thank you. All right, the next case on our docket is case 24-013 VA Fogg of 5 Snow Lane. The application from Jade and Cheryl Fogg requesting a variance from Article II, Section C 3 of the Nottingham ZO in order to permit the installation of a generator that would have a setback of seven feet from the property line. The ZO states the setback is 20 feet. The property is located at 5 Snow Lane in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 1, Lot 181. Hello, hello.
Hello.
Good to see you again, nice to meet you.
I'm Cheryl Fogg.
I'm Jade Frye. We met.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
But for the record, you have to state your names and...
Address.
And your address.
5 Snow Lane.
All right. And then would you review your application with us, please?
Sure, so we are looking to get an on-demand generator, and our property width is only 40 feet. So to be able to comply with that 40 feet, the 20 feet is pretty difficult. We have neighbors to the left of us that actually have an on-demand generator that got that approved last year, so we're just looking to do the same. We have emails from each of our budding neighbors that have sent to you all to say that they have no problem with that. Where it's going to be located will be at least 30 feet from either home on either side, and it won't impede any view or anything of the lake at all. So as you can imagine, we live on Snow Lane, which just became a town road, and it loses power a lot. And when we do lose power, we are far off Route 4, so we are one of the last ones to get it back, so. And we're looking to retire in the next five years and potentially won't be home for an extended period of time and wouldn't want anything to happen to the home.
So the residents on Snow Lane will be snowbirds?
Yes. Well, not totally, because we do love, we do love being at the lake in the wintertime even, so.
Okay. All right. Well, Terry and I went out and saw the location that you're talking about. We're very glad you were able to be home and explain all of that to us. And there is a good distance, it's a carp...
Carport, yeah.
Carport-ish thing?
It's a cement driveway.
Yeah, it's a cement, yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
Between their house and their neighbor's house.
And really, that thing is over on...
It's our property.
Your property, really.
A camp, you know, it's like camp boundary line, so it's like his driveway is on ours and...
That thing separates your neighbor, I mean, right there.
So they're looking to put it here?
Yeah, in the place you show, right?
And then their neighbor's place is here.
There's no other place to put it, exactly.
What's your fuel gonna be for your generator?
Propane.
What kind of a truck do you have?
It's the neighbor's truck.
What kind of truck?
The neighbor's truck that's in the picture?
That's my neighbor's truck.
It's a Honda.
Oh, it's a Honda, I thought it might be.
Yeah, it's the new original. It's adorable.
So this picture is, this is your property here?
Well, the line that's actually drawn is approximately where our property line is. I don't know why they ended up building the structure on our land that was before we first...
It is.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, you realize they're like...
Wow. We're very close with our neighbors.
Oh, yeah.
But that, I mean, that thing cuts you off from neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
The whole big cement wall.
Yeah.
We get along with them, so.
All right, so I will read for you that, a Mark LaCroix?
LaCroix.
Ladies LaCroix. Dear Ms. Kenny, which is the board here, I am writing in response to your letter regarding case number 24-013 VA Fogg, Snow Lane, 5 Snow Lane, excuse me. As an abutter, I fully support granting the zoning variance. Please approve their request. He lives at 7 Snow Lane. The next one is Thomas Bartlett. Dear Ms. Kenny, I am writing in response to your letter regarding the case. As an abutter, I fully support granting the zoning variance. Please approve their request. They, they modeled each other beautifully in their letter. It's almost like a...
We're very close.
Yes.
Okay. So those are the two abutters that he was speaking to that are in agreement with the variance request. Any questions?
No.
No?
I'd like to make a motion.
I'm just gonna throw something out. I've got a little experience with generators. You're gonna have a master switch installed?
Yes, we're having it professionally done.
Good.
Yeah, generator connections, it's putting it in for us.
And how many kilowatts you're gonna put in?
It's 20, 20, I think it is.
Way too much.
Really? We have a lot to...
Are you running a welding shop? You can, your house is how many square feet?
800, 800 something.
No, it's like 14, 15.
1400, you could get away with 7 kilowatts. Go to 12, that'll be fine. But I hope it's not 20 kilowatts, you're going way over size. That's huge.
You'll be sucking that gas bottle right up.
You'll be buying a lot of propane.
Yeah.
12 is more than enough.
Really?
I would talk to him.
I appreciate the advice.
Yes, thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for or against this case? None? Okay, so there will be no public hearing, because there's no public comment. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve case number 24-013 VA Fogg, 5 Snow Lane, as presented to the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the case as written and presented. This is case 24-013 VA Fogg, 5 Snow Lane, requesting a variance from the Article II, Section C 3A of the zoning ordinance in order to permit the installation of a generator that would have a setback of seven feet from the property line. Any more discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, and none opposed, that was a 5-0-0 vote. You have, your variance has been approved.
You have a 30-day window. Okay, thank you. Probably take an appointment till then.
We were told that we needed to, to pay for the, that was 340 bucks for the...
That's for the building inspector, so.
Oh, we just put it, okay.
Yes.
Unless you have cash.
Yeah, spread it out, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. All right, all right, look at that.
May I say that I knew Jade Fogg when he was this big?
Really? She knew?
I knew Jade when he was this big.
And Jessica?
Jessica, of course, and everybody else in the Fogg family. They're from Lee.
I knew his grandfather, yeah.
He was a character with me. His dad's kind of a character, too.
Oh, yeah, he was.
All right, we do have two more cases that are actually same applicant. Case D and E is 24-014 and 015. It's from Dennis, an application from Dennis and Cindy Stevens requesting a variance from Article II, Section C 3A of the Nottingham Zoning Ordinance in order to allow for the installation of an underground propane tank with a setback of zero feet onto the adjacent property of 38 Whites Grove Road. The zoning ordinance requires a setback of 20 feet. The property is located at 36 Whites Grove Road in Nottingham and is identified as Tax Map 63, Lot 61. The second... The second part of this is the application from Dennis Stevens on behalf of Andrew and Kelly Stevens requesting a variance from Article 2, Section C3A of the zoning ordinance in order to allow the installation of an underground propane tank with a setback of zero feet. The propane tank will service the adjacent property at 36 Whites Grove Road. The zoning ordinance requires a setback of 20 feet. Okay, make up, all right. And hello again.
Yes, thank you. We're two hours away.
Oh, yeah, please don't push it.
I'm Cindy Stevens, 36 Whites Grove Road.
And I'm Dennis Stevens, same address.
All right, so go ahead and make your case.
So in summary, we need a zoning variance because we want to bury and hide our propane tank. This was kind of surprising, because normally utilities are not within, considered setbacks. In fact, we have our electrical and our cable going across outside of our property line into our, the adjacent lot to go to the nearest utility pole, which is on the other property. The, our septic system has already been approved. Well, when we bought the house 20 years ago, the septic system was in the adjacent lot, the same lot that we're talking about sharing the propane tank now. And we came back to the zoning board last time, got approval for a larger improved septic system in the same lot. So in summary, to explain the two lots, you look at the plans in front of you. Lot 61, which is the home that we had rebuilt by my wife and I, and it is a very small, hill-staffed side lot up against the water. And lot 62, okay, is horseshoe-shaped and has waterfront to the north of lot 61, all the way around it and to the south of lot 61 and an adjacent lot, I believe it's lot 60, okay? So all of the utilities for five homes cross lot 61, lot 62's property. And there's no way to avoid it, because lot 62 owns all the property between these five lots and Whites Grove Road. And getting back to the case, well, that's a little bit of history, but getting back to the lot 61, lot 61's, the width of the property is 55 feet and the length is 62 feet. And so it's a very small lot, so with the placement of the home, which is 30 by 40, we only have eight feet of setback from the north property line, and we have 20 feet from the water. We do have, we do meet the setback of 20, we have 20 feet to 30 feet on the south property line, but that property line is lined with 110, 120-foot pine trees. And they are shown on, I don't think the pine trees are shown on your drawings, but I gave Alana an update that had, that was in color, and you have the 851 color update. It will show the pine trees that are along the property lines. I have a couple extra ones.
It's probably here somewhere.
See the green circles?
See the green circles? Three green circles.
And there's no green circles on yours. Okay, these green circles right here.
Oh, okay, I got these red ones.
Green, aren't they?
There's some red on this, yeah. Along the south of the property, there's some red circles along the fence line between lot 60 and 61. And the, what I just gave out, only two copies, I'm sorry, showed some green circles that are on the north part.
That's right, I've been at court all night.
On the north part. There's a lot of lots there.
Thank you.
There's a lot of pine trees. But simply what we want to do is stay away from those pine trees. The only location that we could possibly put an underground propane tank is south of the house of lot 61, which would be 10 feet from the property line and 10 feet from the building. And if you look at the drawings, they show a small section of the yard. There's red bees, there's two red lines that one depicts 10 feet from the property and one depicts 10 feet from the building. And it's marked number three. Do you all see it?
Yes.
A propane tank would fit there, but it's smack dab in the middle of the home yard this house has, okay? And also, it is only 10 feet from those large pines. We recently did a, some well pre-digging and hit pine, hit the pine tree roots within 10 feet, okay? I think we're like maybe nine to 11 feet away from the pine tree, and we stopped digging. We don't want to undermine these roots. You may not know, but the big windstorm we had that followed two weeks of rain. This neighborhood lost like 20 pines, and half of them were directly across the street from our home here. And if we do anything to destroy the root balls, that makes a danger to any of the houses around there.
You don't have to do anything to them, they just go over anyway.
Yes.
I can show you them in my backyard. They just do whoop.
So we don't want to add to that factor, right? So I'm so, unbeknownst to me, I wasn't aware that I'd have to follow these guidelines for the underground septic tanks, because we have an above-ground septic tank. That's a septic.
You did?
Yes.
Twice.
Propane tank, okay? Because we have above-ground propane tanks all around us. Every home in the area has one. Both of these houses that we own on lot 61, 62 have above-ground propane tanks. And they're the five-foot models, like 30 inches in diameter, okay? When I met Palmer Gas and Northeastern out here, they told me that they recommended a minimum of three 100-gallon, and I think these, the normal ones are 60-gallon, three above-ground 100-gallon tanks, up to five, okay? But a minimum of three. And so I can locate those up against my home, within 10 feet of the property line, with no issue, okay? Because they fall under the guidelines of having, being below 125 gallons. They're pretty much non-regulated. And because I want to store 500 gallons underground, I need to cover a variance. And any underground tank, actually, any underground tank under 2,000 gallons requires 10 feet from the property line and 10 feet from the building, the structures. So when I quizzed about this, Scott, gentleman from Eastern, said, "We'll waive the property line. We don't care how close it is to the property line. We just basically want the underground tanks 10 feet away from your building's structure." And I said, "Then let's put it right here where I'm showing it." And he said, "Well, I can't do that without town approval." Okay? We'll waive it, but in respect of our relationship with the town and what the towns expect of us, we want town approval to set the tank adjacent to your property line. And so I went in to see Dale Stilby about that, and I asked him for the letter, and he said, "Well, I'm not gonna give it to you, because technically a propane tank is a structure and you have to be 20 feet, so that's one there." Do you have anything?
No.
Well, would you rather have an above-ground or a below-ground tank in your yard?
I have above, but that's okay.
And we've had it above for 20 years, but with the additional size, capacity of the house and the fact that we, we year-round, we like to have 500 gallons, the, doing it underground, to me, is a safety factor for fire. It's a lot less subject to ignition sources and that kind of stuff. It's a static issue, big time. And anybody who has the opportunity to store underground. Also, if you think about it, propane, have you ever taken your propane, you get it refilled when it's like 10 degrees outside, you swear it's too heavy, right? Well, propane is not as volatile at colder temperatures as warmer. What I mean is it's vapor pressure, so it doesn't vaporize. And so you actually lose usage, so it's an environmental thing, too, in my opinion.
Are you gonna just operate a generator off of the propane? Or are you also gonna work a cooking stove and/or a furnace?
Well, making plans to spend some time in the winter out there, you have to think about all the times that the power goes out in this neighborhood. And it's very frequent, there's a lot of power outages, so in our home, we're doing a geothermal system to try to stay off the electrical grid. The geothermal system needs auxiliary heat, and we don't want to do electrical auxiliary heat, so we're doing a propane boiler, a high-injury boiler, that is the auxiliary heat for the geothermal system. We also are doing a gas range, and we have a gas fireplace, and we're doing a gas-water heater. So all these would be propane off the electrical grid.
Have you thought about putting in a 1,000-gallon tank?
Oh, yes, but I don't think I need that.
Well, with all of the demand on propane that you're talking to me about...
But it's not all the same at the same time.
I understand.
Yeah, I've gone through the usage...
A 500-gallon tank only has 400 gallons of propane.
Right.
Because you need what they call a wetted surface. What that means is it has to, the liquid has to have enough wetted surface to evaporate. If you filled it right up to the tippy-top, it wouldn't evaporate fast enough for the draw.
Right.
So they only put in 80%.
You need air and fuel for a combustible mixture.
There's no air in there, it's just propane.
Yeah.
Air gets mixed in when it's in the burner, whatever it might be, for the generator.
All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the, to the request.
I have a question.
Sorry.
That's okay.
One more. Are these the trees right here? The green circles?
The red things?
Well, I have red that look like trees.
Yeah, those are trees.
Those are the trees?
Yeah, on that side.
The red, the red clouds on the south are the trees on the south, and your large plan is not showing the green circles, but if you look north of the property, you see the clouds, that is the tree line to the coast across the entire page, almost.
My dear friend.
There's...
There's two sets of trees there.
The wires. This is the tree line shown by the surveyors, okay? They go all the way down here.
Right, but you...
This right here specifically shows the trees that are 110 feet, okay, inside this cloud. So those trees are marked right in here, okay? So by putting a propane tank here, it gives me not only 10 feet away from my property line, it's in the adjacent property, it's on the property line, 10 feet away from my building, it's 10 feet away from lot 62's building, but it's also like 15 to 20 feet away from the trees.
So this right here says proposed propane tank?
Yeah, that's where we put it when we went to, we had to show somewhere for the Shoreland Protection, and then we really got to talking about installing it, we said, "Well, we can't put it here, it's only like five feet away from these 110-foot trees."
That's why I was asking that, so it's here.
Yes, ma'am. The yellow...
Yeah, you didn't have it, you didn't have it marked off for us at all when we went up, is we've asked to have areas marked.
Nobody asked me to mark it.
That was a request that we had Alana making with everybody, and it was not marked off. So we were kind of like trying to figure out exactly where he wanted these things.
Right, because this, that's what I was wondering, because this looks closer to the trees than in area number three, and I'm going, well, that doesn't make any sense. So where up here now?
See, not only is area number three a poor location, but the original location that we went to Shoreland. And I left that on there, because I wanted to show you that the Shoreland Protection people were allowing me inside the 50-foot setback line.
But you were still on your property.
But I was on my property, in the middle of the yard.
Still on your property.
Yes.
I just, I had a few questions to open the question.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, you know, we're a very pro property rights board, I mean, a lot of times we get complaints we're a little too pro property rights, but so you've come in and we've granted you the, an eight-foot variance, and then you went down to 36. And we gave you a zero on the septic tank, seven foot on the front, 15 on the rear, and in your description, you say that the variance process is what helped you, you know, made you able to build your house on that lot. But the only thing you got, you know, you have a small lot, but the only thing you have on your lot is the house and the well. Everything else is on your son's lot. There isn't anything on your lot, and now you want to even put the propane on your son's lot, because you got, you got the sediment pit, that's on your son's lot, you got the septic tank in the viral, that's over on your son's lot. You got the geothermal wells, how many wells do you have? There's a lot there.
There's four geothermal wells.
Okay. And then you got the underground electric, that goes through there. Now you want a propane tank, so, and I didn't see, I looked at the registry, I didn't see any easements for, the only easement I saw was for the electric. I didn't see an easement for the septic system, I didn't see an easement on your well, I didn't see any easements anywhere for anything but, I didn't see any easement for the septic sediment pit. I think you have to have easements on all that. The only trouble is, you know, you put, you put so much stuff on your son's land that, you know, you've kind of compromised that lot, really, so that, you know, all those things have to meet a setback, so if they ever want to do further development on that lot, you're gonna have to come in for variances, and I don't know how you could get variances for stuff that you've done. It's not real a hardship, you know? I don't know how you could be a hardship on that lot when you've, you've put all this stuff on that lot yourself. So, I mean, it's a small thing, I mean, the propane tank, but I think we've done enough, and that lot thing would fit on your lot, and I think it should stay on your lot, so.
In response to that, the reason everything is on lot 62 is it's been on lot 62 for 40 years, okay? I didn't put a septic system on lot 62, I rebuilt it on lot 62. I didn't, the drainage system here is new, okay?
Right, the sediment...
There was nothing, but it's totally ground, it's not an above-ground structure, we didn't ask for variances for it.
Right.
I put that structure there because I topped lot 62 and the lot 60, and we all thought that putting something there to intercept water drainage would help lot 60 next door.
Right.
Because all the water from lot 62, not lot 61, where it's under construction, but lot 62, the water from lot 62 goes to lot 60 and always keeps their basement wet. Their basement is just a stone wall, okay? The utilities, the two utility poles that service this area are on lot 62 and lot 60, 59, 58, 63, and 64, no, not 64, 63, that's it. All go to those two utility poles, and what I did during this construction, okay, was to take all the overhead lines out. They're going to every single house, and I put underground lines in. going to every single house, and I put underground lines in, to improve the aesthetics and keep tree limbs falling on them and proving it. I've been an engineer for 45 years, and I've been building houses and, and things like this for the last 30 of them, 35, and, uh, what I'm doing here is for the improvement of the entire neighborhood, not just Lot 61. And, uh, we own Lot 62, the family owns Lot 62, and we put it in a family member's name, uh, if another lot, adjacent lot comes available, we may purchase that, and we'll put it in another family member's name. The Stevens family plans to stay here for the next 50 years anyway, we hope. So, where's the best place for this tank? And the, the comment on the 2,000-gallon tank, I agree with you, I'd love to do it if there was room for it, and I would make it a shared tank, so that Lot, uh, Lot 61 and 62 can share that one tank, because there's no reason why everybody has to have their own tank like a car or something, when you, when it's never going anywhere, it's stationary, and, it's better for the economy, better for the, 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 the environment, I should say, it's not common.
So, other than the septic system, what else is on the other family lot?
Underground electric.
Underground electric, well, must be...
Well, it's overhead electric, but now it's underground.
I hear you, yeah, I like underground.
Yeah.
Looks a lot better.
And the cable.
Go through the wiring.
Again, I wanna remind everybody, we're here to discuss the setback issue with the propane tank, it is going to be a zero setback from both lots, because it will be on that lot line.
Can I have one other thing to add, okay? Part of the, one of the questions asked was, is there anything in the ordinance that regulates underground propane tanks? Or even above-ground propane tanks? Is there anything that regulates other utilities? Yes, there is, for the septic system, okay? But, uh, there's nothing specifically related to propane tanks.
It's considered a structure, man-made structure, and there was some debate about how do we, I mean, a ho- a home needs something for, and I, for the heater, the gas, or whatever, but I think the biggest issue, again, is the zero setback. It's not the fact that you're burying it, as much as you wanna make it that issue with us, it's not that fact. The fact is that you're asking us to ignore completely our zoning ordinance, and I think Mr. Bonzer pointed out very well that with this whole development, every step of the way, you've been asking for variances for setbacks, so that you could build a bigger house, and have your house situated just so, and all these other things to have the house that you want, yes, and we get that, but you have a small lot, you knew that when you bought it, or when you inherited it, or whatever, so...
And I've had a propane tank here too, with zero setbacks. I've always had a propane tank here with zero setbacks, I just wanted to bury it and hide it. Because I'm burying it, now the propane company wants a letter from the town saying it's okay, which is, meaning it would give us. If I don't get that, the tanks will go exactly where they are, and I'll have to build a fence around them or something, but building inspector might want me to come back here for that fence, and if I don't get it, then they'll just be sitting there with no fence.
I'm just saying this is what the issue is before us.
I, I know.
Okay, I wasn't looking at all to have a debate or argument, I was just stating that this is what the issue is for us, is the request for the zero feet of setback.
But isn't there, isn't there, isn't it allowed to have zero setback if it already existed before zoning?
But his septic system didn't, wasn't on a zero set, I mean, his, um, propane tank wasn't at a zero setback before zoning, he's, he's asking to move it to that.
He says it's in the same place.
It just said it was in the same place.
Not, not same place, I'm asking now, it was, it was alongside the house, in that, in that eight-foot setback area, I would say the propane tank was, um, four feet.
From the lot line.
Yeah.
But the zero setback, and it's putting it on the adjacent lot, not on the property itself, and that, that is...
Is that illegal? Well, the zero setback is, that I can see.
Okay, and, and, and having it on the other lot is the other consideration.
And the other lot is owned by us and the other lot owner on my side, that's where he wants it too. It's the best place for it, and if he installed the tank, and then I just add another line to it, that would probably service our ability too, but we wanna follow the right procedures and come in here and, I don't know.
I think you have room, you know, right where you showed it, propose, in that number three spot, I think you have room.
I won't put it there.
All right, that's up to you.
The, the reason I won't put it there is...
I mean, you have to compromise somewhere, you built this, you built a house, you used up most of the land, and now, now you want it over there.
What I do is I do above-ground, uh, on this other side where I have utilities, I do it along the property line, um, and I'll probably have four tanks there, that'll take up twice the space of an underground tank, okay? But I can't put it in the only part that I have a yard, plus that close to the pine trees. I cannot get far enough in the pine trees, uh, without getting down within 20 feet of the water line, okay, where, where the, the, the space opens up, okay? And it's just, these pine trees, I showed three of them to show how close they were to number three, but these pine trees continue all the way to the water, there's three more that continue all the way to the water, so...
I've had a lot of experience with pine trees, they're pretty resilient, really.
All right, uh, any further discussion?
Terry. Terry, Terry, give me that one page that you gave me with the green markings.
You want what?
This sheet?
You want this sheet here?
Yeah, thank you.
Any more questions? Any other discussion?
I have one question.
Okay.
Please don't laugh at me.
Okay, that far, it's not...
Is it safer to bury a propane tank than above-ground? Is there any safety issue?
There's, it's certainly safer, because the, the tank's protected, um, it's underground from, protected from any outside physical trauma, you might say. Now, I'm not gonna pull any hood over everybody's eyes, there's always a regulator on a, on a, on a, on a, on the tank, and the regulator's always above-ground, but the regulator would be down low, about the size of a trashcan, about that far off, and normally would hide that with like one of those vacant rocks or something, okay? But we're only talking one regulator for this tank, instead of a regulator for each of the three or four or five tanks that I would have to put in to substitute for, okay? So we're talking about one device versus, versus probably four. And all the, excuse me, all the, uh, all the piping will be below ground as well, uh, nothing will come up above ground, so there, if there are above-ground tanks, then all the piping will be above ground.
It's an aesthetic issue, more than anything for him, based on, based on what he's been saying.
I just hear about houses, houses exploding once in a while.
Well, that's with the natural gas.
Bonnie, what'd you say? How they what?
I just hear about houses occasionally, very occasionally, very rarely, exploding.
Natural gas.
Yeah.
Here's you the tank that doesn't explode, it's just a gas outside that leaks from the tank that explodes out there.
And the, the nice thing about propane is it's lighter than air, if it's leaking from the tank, it's not like a gas, gassing spill that hovers on the ground until the wind blows it, propane rises immediately, and...
Propane's heavier.
Yeah, well, it's all the lighter than air, it don't rise.
You can smell it.
Anyway, oh, you can smell it, it has a, it has a...
It's rotting, yeah.
Usually rides along the ground, I think.
All right, folks, let's recall this back in, Rainya, and, anything, Romeo?
Oh, I, I've, uh, I think I understand everything.
Okay, Kathy? Bonnie? Terry, anything else?
No.
All right, I will entertain a motion, just for the, uh, folks out there in TV land, there is nobody else here in the audience, so, again, we will not have a, uh, public hearing being opened or closed, 'cause there isn't any public. So, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve Case 2415, VA Stevens, 38, White's Grove Road, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we approve Case 24 dash zero one-four and zero-one-five as presented, 'cause there's two cases, correct Bonnie?
Correct.
It was for both cases?
Yes.
To allow for the zero, um, uh, zero setback?
Yes.
Correct, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we shall proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries three, four, two against, and no, um, no abstentions.
Thank you, we did that. Very nice, very fine.
So... You're welcome, and you still have that 30-day window for somebody to appeal it?
Absolutely.
Just so you're aware. All right, we shall continue on with the rest of our agenda this evening, there is no public for public comment, any other business, anybody have anything going on that they'd like to bring up? Romeo?
No.
Terry?
Nope.
Kathy? Bonnie?
Could I have just a really resentenced report on the joint meeting with the...
I was going to give that.
Yes, I, I think I was at the hospital that day.
Okay, uh, so we did have the joint planning board and zoning board and fire department and police and rec, I'm not sure who else was there, but, um, the other entities came as well, um, we did discuss with both fire and police and rec, uh, about the, um, impact fees and the importance of them looking at their departments to see if the incoming properties and residents were putting a strain, if you will, or added burden onto their departments to consider putting together something for the planning board, because impact fees are gonna be looked at again this year. Uh, we also started discussing the issues that we, as a zoning board, have been seeing for variance requests, um, and we had more discussion on two of them last week, one of them being detached ADUs, and there, I, I highly encourage you guys to take a look at that, 'cause the discussion was, uh, surprising to me, the, the opposition to allowing the detached ADUs. Several of the members felt that it would be making it so that there was income properties on a, um, parcel of land when the, the ADU is no longer being used for family members, but instead was being used as rental space, and that we are very quickly going to make Nottingham into either Dover or Manchester or someplace like that.
But the law doesn't say anything about family occupancy.
The law does say that one person who owns the property needs to be in it, but not families, correct, but that's typically the excuse of having an ADU, so my, you know, like at the mother-in-law apartment, but their, their concern is that the ADU would just be income-producing as, as in rentals, and they didn't want us having...
We have such a housing shortage.
Well, I, I, if you feel strongly one way or another for the detached ADU, then I would really encourage you to come to the next, um, planning board meeting, which is next week, um, or send a message to Ed, or Blair, or to Alana to get to them, so that your voice could be heard on it, because it very much sounds like, um, several of the board members are swaying towards, uh, not allowing it because of the rental property aspects of the ADUs. Um, the other one we looked at were setbacks, which I've mentioned several times to them is a, is a big issue for us, um, and, again, when we, we keep approving, approving and approving, one, in fact, one comment was made to me, um, when he came in, right away was, so are we gonna allow for a negative 10 setback now? You guys keep approving all of these narrow setbacks, and now we're gonna go with negative 10? So, um, I need, I need some support on what you wanna do with setbacks, which, they've looked at them mostly for the, um, non-conforming lots, but we've approved them even for conforming lots, so I really want to know it, what, you just send your information to me, what you would prefer to see for setbacks, 'cause if 20 and 50 feet are too much in your opinions, then we need to look at changing it. Is land becoming so scarce that we are going to look at diminishing these? And then again, what is the purpose of a setback? What, what do we consider the purpose of this land that should not be invaded into, if you will, on, on properties?
One of the main things that keep coming up in whatever I read is that zoning ordinances are keeping people from building houses, they're one of the factors, not the only one, money's very expensive too, but, the, uh, zoning ordinances, you have to, for example, have at least 200 feet of road function, and you have to build it, if you're developing land, that's very expensive to do, isn't it, Terry?
It's all well and good, in theory, to have setbacks, however, Nottingham has a couple of peculiarities outside of Kansas or Oklahoma, where all the land is flat and it's alluvium. So, we have ledge, we have a great deal of wetlands, thank you, and, uh, uh, we have an awful lot of odd-shaped lots, some of them are long and skinny, some of them are, well, I don't have to get into it, there's a lot of odd-shaped lots, so, yeah, you can sit in a boardroom and say, okay, 20-foot setback, 50-foot setback, whatever the case might be, in theory, easy, in practicality, it's not so easy. And by the way, you, you started, I'm, I'm shifting the subject, 'cause I wanna get this in before I forget it, you were saying some people are worried about Nottingham turning into a Dover or, or, what did you say, Portsmouth?
Manchester.
Manchester for rentals? How many rentals do we have now?
I don't think we have about, oh, is it that many? I was thinking about three or four.
10?
We don't have city water, we're not gonna turn it into a Dover.
I mean, how many, how many rentals are we worried about?
City street.
We're suing.
What, a population's what, 4,000? Or just, just creeped over 4,000 a while ago?
I think it's over five.
Huh? Is it really?
I should ask my son.
While you were sleeping.
I guess so.
Gotta get out that square and... But the other thing is, I mean, we have open space developments, we have reduced setbacks for all of those, but the people with the two-acre lot, they got 50-foot setbacks, like, all the way around, I think it's like, I think I figured it out, it was like, what, an acre or, an acre and a quarter of their land is used in setbacks, and, you know, they got three-quarters of an acre out of two acres they can actually use.
In theory, it's great, but in practicality, or reality, it isn't.
Right.
So, uh, again, what, what is it we should be doing? It's not the developers who come before us, asking for a variance, not, not often at all, I think we've had, maybe had one or two, most of them, if, if they're developing a large partial, parcel of land, they're before the planning board, and they would get their variance because they're, and they, they go through them like this, I mean, they talk about us approving them, we do the same thing on the planning board, so I don't understand, why we get slammed for it all the time, but, um, but we don't, one of the things that we don't want, and that is in our zoning ordinance, is not to have lots that are oddly shaped. In fact, there's a development that we've got before us now, where we've actually asked them to go back and, and look at the lots, because they have some of them oddly shaped. We don't want the triangles, we don't want them with, I think it's less than, I say 50 feet... want the triangles. We don't want them with, I think it's less than, I say fifty feet, but it could be something else at any point in time in it because we want them to be more streamlined and easier for the people to use. So when they're carving out parcels, we're asking them to take a look at that on the planning board side.
And that's great for future, but a lot of times we're talking about what's already.
And most of, I don't, I'm speaking for self here. I see that the majority of the cases we get before us are more of lakefront homes or, or those that were on the private roads that are now town roads. So that wiped away.
Obviously, you know, seventy-five percent of our cases, yeah.
I'm curious how many lot line adjustments we've approved compared to how many lots have been approved for, for construction? Are we, are we fifty-fifty or are we one out of twenty?
Lot line adjustments?
No, no, I, no, I'm talking about variances for lot line, for setbacks.
Okay.
Did I say lot line approval?
You did, which confused me.
Sometimes I don't know what I'm talking about.
That's okay.
Okay, usually I don't know what I'm talking about. But no, I, I, you know, how many cases of, now you got me going.
Okay, for setbacks.
Of setbacks are we hearing compared to how many different lots are approved for construction? I mean, if we're doing one lot line adjustment, one variance, god damn, what did I say?
For a setback.
One setback per each one other lot being approved, that's too many. But if it's one out of twenty or thirty, that's not a big thing. It's just because we have a lot of screwball lots, ledge, uh, uh, wetlands, and too small an area.
Well, the biggest thing seems to be that the lots are small and they want a big house.
Well, doesn't everybody?
But what I'm saying is that's where you get the, I don't, I want my setback or I can't have my setback be twenty feet. I can't build the house I want to build. So they're coming before us. And that's why I'm saying, what do we do? Because we've already reduced our setbacks for these non-conforming lots. We did that a couple of years ago? Like Bonnie? Two, maybe three years ago?
Three or four maybe.
And, and it hasn't really helped because even though we've reduced it, we're still getting requests for less and less and less for these setbacks. So my question is, are they necessary? Do you feel like they're necessary? And if so, then what, what is our hard and fast? Like no more than three feet? Is it no more than five feet?
They're necessary.
One foot?
They're necessary. However, that's what the ZBA is. We take into consideration the hardships or the difficulties of the lot to give approval or not. Do you remember when somebody wanted to put a well, a, a septic right next to the property line and on the other side of the property line about five feet away was a well?
Mm-hmm.
Well, we didn't approve that. But what we did was we forced them to redesign where the leach field and the, and the, and the septic was going to be located. And that's fine. And that's what we're here for is we're, we're the exceptions to the rule. And it's very important. There still should be a rule to an extent, but that rule, you have to understand, can only be applied to plain Jane. I, I'm making fun of Kansas. If you've ever been to Kansas, it's flat.
It's high though, Romeo.
Well, but it's-
And I imagine the buffalo.
It's, it's flat. It's flat. I mean, there's rolling hills, but it's flat.
Yes.
But we don't have flat.
No.
We have ledge. We've got steep embankments. We've got wetlands. I, I don't have to go through that all over again.
In Michigan, they have no rocks.
And, huh?
They have no rocks in Michigan.
I don't know about Michigan. I'm talking about Kansas, but anyway.
I know you are. But I mean, there are places in the country that have much easier sites.
Oh, I want to tell you. I'm developing a fifty-five-plus community in Oklahoma. It's all just alluvium. We dig and, and we, we put the septic, the, the sewer lines in, we put the, the electric in, everything. It's easy. And, and I laugh and I say, hey, you, and my partner came up here one time. I showed him some of the buildings we built in Manchester. We paid over a million dollars just in blasting from main drilling and blasting, and this was twenty years ago.
Wow.
I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, we-
We're not flatland.
No, and I get that, um, that we are the board that looks at each of these exceptions and that's what I tell them. It's a case-by-case basis and it's totally dependent on what we see. But what I'm asking is, do you feel that the twenty feet is, is what we should continue with for these non-conforming lots as a minimum, or do we need to look at something else? And then as far as the other lots, I mean, I, I can't even begin to tell you how many house lots have been approved within the past year with, through the planning board. And it's because we've got these cluster house developments going in. There's two that I can think of right away on Smoke and Fort Hill and the other one on one fifty-six.
And are they leaving a lot of open space?
Well, yeah, that's what that's all about.
All going to come out net two acres per house?
It's less than two.
Oh, but I mean, but there's going to be open space.
Correct.
Open space and the lot comes out to about two.
No.
No? Okay. At one time, that wasn't going to happen about eight, nine, ten years ago.
But back to the setbacks, it seems to me, just thinking about them, that we get far more requests for five feet or eight feet or nine than we do for eighteen or seventeen.
Mm-hmm. That's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
I wouldn't screw with it. And I would just say, let people come over and explain their predicament and then we'll decide whether it's something that should, we should approve or not.
Well, the other, the other piece to that though, Romeo, and why I'm asking, is because in ninety-nine percent of the time, we are saying, yes, your variance is approved. So there is a question as to whether or not we should change it because we are more or less just making it difficult for our neighbors to do what they want to do with their property and they're having to pay three, four, five hundred dollars to come before us, depending on how many abutters they have.
Must be a self-funded department.
Question delays the-
Progress.
Months, a couple months, yeah.
So something to think about. And then this Friday is a Stratford Regional Planning Commission meeting and I will be going to that. So I will update you if there's anything new on that. All right, anything else for new business? No, okay, we have minutes from the twentieth of August. Did everybody have a chance to read through them? And are there any changes? If not, I will take a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, approve. Romeo, second, Terry. All right, anybody? It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of August twentieth as read. Does anybody have any concerns or questions? If you should happen to take a second glance at them and see anything, just let Alana know. She'll make those changes. But it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
August the five, zero, zero. And that's it. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we're adjourned.